My call is coming in here, North City Council order, December 15th, 2014. It's called a roll for attendance.
Mr. Vogt. Mr. Carr. Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee. Mr. Raff. Mr. Roletta. And Mr. Blake.
I'm here. We have all here this evening. Next on the agenda is the invitation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by a pledge of allegiance. One drop?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful time of year when there's so much going on and so many kids involved, and family and friends. We ask that you be with those people for whom this is not a happy time of year, for whom this is a difficult time of year. There always seem to be a lot of illnesses and tragedies that happen at this time of year. So please be with those people. Be with people for whom life is difficult because of lack of funds for Christmas presents, as well as for, you know, things like heat and light and those kinds of things. We ask that you be with us as we deliberate tonight, grant us wisdom and guidance as we make the decisions for the city. We ask this in your name.
Please join me in blood.
I declare the citizens to the line of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, our nation, in thy name, God, in this world, with ever-fitting justice for all.
Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda, we have comments. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda that they may have this evening. Do we have any names? We'll go on to the minutes for our December 1st, 2014 meeting. We have a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. All of them therefore signify by saying aye. Our votes say aye. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports to stand and commit to this evening, one from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvement. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, on reports from city officials, we have two this evening, one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, and one from Barb Jones, the city tax administrator. The auditor is the operator report for the period ending November 30th, 2014, and from the income tax administrator, it's the income tax collection reports ending November 30th, 2014. Once again, without objection, those will be received and filed. We have three communications this evening, one from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a new liquor license request for the Grove by the River at 840 Hollinger Street, one from Christie Miller suggesting that the city change their ordinance regarding breed-specific legislation, and one from Paul Moran, concerns regarding the condition of the Mount City Park. Once again, without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There's two periods when you can comment, one is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council or a question and answer period, this is just an opportunity for you to give your comment. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this evening? Just raise your hand for me. Yes, sir. If you'd just come right up to the podium and give us your name and address.
I'm Shane McMillan, I live on 133 Van Boren Street in Newark. I talk about things that happened with my dog. I was, I went through the good citizenship training, and I also went to get my dog further therapy ted approved, so she's a licensed therapy dog. I had problems getting papers where Toby was giving me papers in the mail, I've only received one, maybe two of them, over like a six-year period. This time, he said he sent me one, and I went to court. I missed the first court date, I didn't even get it in the mail. And when I told him that I have certified therapy dog, I asked him, I was like, because he called me and he was being his normal person when he did. And he was like, you did not do this. I told him I didn't even get the papers, and I had all the papers. I even had something with law on a folder that I had, saying when I get this letter in the mail that I give them the good citizenship. And I was gonna show him that I also have a certified therapy dog. He hung up on me sometime in the same, when I was trying to tell him, like, now, please tell me what I have to do, because like I was on my way to work. My wife half an hour later dropped all the papers down there. We gave him calls, she went down there, she had them write a letter, cause boss asking him to call them. And about three weeks later, I got a paper saying I had to go to court. I had to go to trial now, because he doesn't want to take the papers for my dog. They said that I violated not doing yet, what is it? No, exotic animal. I don't have exotic animal, you know? And I had to go to trial, my lawyer hasn't even found anything. I've also had problems with him, like I've called him several times, other neighbors have called, he's got a dog that lives in the alley, that pulled a little girl off a bike, had chased another dude, I even told him on his thing that I have video camera evidence that this dog is vicious. Never once did he do anything, he didn't even come down. I mean, I have other complaints, my dog has been shot in the face like over a three-year period with BB guns, she had BB gun marks all over her muzzle, had BB gun marks all over the eyes. I had to call the Newark Police Station, have a police officer come out to do this, and I pulled a BB out her nose, out the soft part of her nose, and he's never wants to return any of my calls. Only time I do get a call from him is when I, you know, at the end of the year, if I don't get the thing, but every time he calls me, I always have stuff for him. This time, he didn't even want to listen to me, and heard that I have good citizenship and all this other stuff, he hung up on me, would not return any of my calls. He told me before that Newark grants him the power to come on my property and seize my animal, and if I, you know, if I went to court, he would seize her and euthanize me. He has taken her once, because he said that if I didn't sign her over, he was going to get a warrant, and then he would put her down. When that happened, I don't know if she stood around, the back of her tail was knocked, like it was bent like this, and I pulled it, it went back in. Nothing would happen. There's other complaints about him like that, of other nature, where no one can get a hold of him when he's supposed to, or like we give him time and nothing ever. And there's other dogs, my dog has not ever done anything to anybody. The only time he's ever seen my dog, first time I seen him, my dog was out in the morning yard, in the yard in the morning using the restroom, and then he stopped, came over, telling me I was in violation, and I didn't even know. I told him that I was gonna, you know, I have a dog, American Standardshire Terrier, he told me if I put that down, he'd mark it off and put pit bull. Which I understand, you know, he can have the right to do all this, but he's, every time I deal with him, he's got a PTSD, and it's just becoming worse and worse, when he comes over, and I don't, I have anxiety attacks when he comes around, and it just keeps on getting worse, and this time is the end of it. I mean, I don't know what else to do. I mean, he, I did everything that I was told I had to do, and it's not good enough for him. And I even have a lawyer now, he's looked over all my papers, and he said there's nothing that he sees that I did wrong, besides the fact that he just won't take my papers, argue me a call back or anything. I don't know what else to say.
Alright, thank you, sir. Ma'am. Yes. You wanna go ahead, I have a couple suggestions here.
Actually, I'd like to give everybody a packet. This is my petition.
Just hand it to Ms. Fowler.
And the stories. And I have my own personal story and speech in there. It's very...
Just give us your name and address through the record, that'd be great.
My name's Elizabeth A. Ford. I live at 476 Olson Avenue here in North, I've been there for 18 years. And... Oh, I didn't realize I was going to start. And some of my stories were of shame, the gentleman just spoke, so I'm gonna kinda like pass her that since you already heard from him, if that's okay. Okay. My name is Elizabeth A. Ford. Hard to hear today, is to end the harassment and abuse that Mr. Willis has put pit bull owners through, both before and after the North City Council and the state of Ohio change the laws, to give good pit bulls and their owners a path to living in peace. I along with both people here, in those, along the signatures, of Peter Lynn's petition, calling the petition, that we have been harassed and discriminated against, and frankly, that we've been and are being treated like criminals for just hunting a dog, that Mr. Willis, whom contrary to the law, still seems, seems vicious. On May 31st, 2012, the 29th General Assembly of the State of Ohio passed House 2 House Bill Number 14, to amend sections 955.08, 955.11, 955.22, 955.99, 1901-18, and 1907.031, and to enact sections 90, or 955.222, and 955.54, of the revised code to remove pit bulls from the definition of vicious dog in the state law. The law is clear, that pit bulls are not considered vicious due to their breed, they have to do something before they are considered vicious. Furthermore, December 17th, the North Ohio City Council, which, I'm sure you all know, amended the city pit bull ordinance, giving pit bulls and other so-called vicious dogs in North Ohio a chance to prove they are good citizens and that is the automatic designation of vicious. This was passed by our city council, Hintonland, and this new ordinance, pit bulls will be removed from the vicious dog status. At the end, we go to formal training and annually pass a canine citizen test. I'm so sorry. A couple of weeks ago, I received a call, this was in November, actually it was Thanksgiving evening when I got this call, and it was from Mr. Retain over there, telling me that he had to go to court, which you have already heard that. So I'm gonna kinda pass past that since you've already heard. Give me just a second. I also have a friend that needs to reharm her pit bull. After four years of being about to obtain a city permit, now for some reason, unspoken to her, she was told now by Mr. Willis, no explanation given. Why? Is it because he heard and supported this petition? A lot of people are afraid to speak out in fear of retaliation for Mr. Willis. Sadly now, that the law no longer calls them vicious automatically, Mr. Willis calls them exotic animals. Really? What is so exotic about my dog or anyone else's dog that's here? His discretionary power is allowing him to take, him to make new terms to fit old laws. My personal dealings with this are let, let me stay, I'm not a con artist. I've never been to jail. I have lived in the same address for 18 years, I'm not a gangster. I don't fight my dogs, I don't breed my dogs. I'm 47 years old, and my pets are raised like family. I am under the stereotype that Mr. Willis has continues paint for me and everybody else that owns a dog. Stop! I'm not a criminal, just because I own a dog. Mr. Willis still finds it necessary to label me, my family, and my dogs despite the state of Ohio removing the breed specific from its law, and nor denying myself and peers' ability to show that our pets and our pits are good citizens. I have spent 12 years and around $5,000 in lawyer fee, not so much as lawyer fees, but trying to find one, and for the first time, countless hours trying to find someone who would insure me, I've actually taken my pets into hiding, scared to death that Mr. Willis was gonna take my dog and put him down, put me in jail for six months and buy me $1,000. Sorry. Mr. Willis told me these things while standing on my front porch in our first meeting about my dog. Mr. Willis and two of his coworkers, who I assume they were, came to my home to check on an older Rottweiler I had out back. Mr. Willis, the two coworkers, and I walked around, back so I could show them my two female Rottweilers, and they were satisfied that I was taking very good care of her. The four of us walked back up to my front porch, my back was against my back door, and Mr. Willis and his two coworkers were in front of me. And we were talking about the girls, and the next thing I knew, Mr. Willis had grabbed his, this is when he was allowed to have a gun, he grabbed his gun out of his holster and told me to put my dog up. And I was confused, I didn't know what he was talking about, I thought the good female brought it and gotten out, so I'm looking around, and there was no dog. And I'm like, where? And he yells, behind, behind you. I turned around, looked down through my glass, on my closed front store door, there was just my little five-month-old pit puppy looking through the glass. I turned back around so confused, and asked Mr. Willis, are you talking about the baby? He hollers, yes. I said, he's a baby? Mr. Willis said I was knowingly and willingly harboring a vicious animal. I'm like, huh? Mind you, I was just in a car accident three hours before this too, so, stuff was just going crazy. That day, I began the hell of dealing with the overzealous city employee, who repeatedly has come to my home and harassed me and caused me to live in fear. Even after this city passed this ordinance, Mr. Willis also made it clear that I was unable to join a canine search and rescue team. My oldest pit passed away in January. It's been two years. About two weeks after Pete passed, I got another pit puppy. I was made to follow the North laws, to be insured again, shed Barrett, and buy a city permit, and this time, I did join a canine search and rescue group, because the state law said he wasn't vicious anymore. Barrett is the first male to pass a good citizenship test in North. I paid $75 for the seven-week class, one day a week, and another 20th, end of the graduation, you get a blue ribbon and a certificate, and you can mail out to the AKC, and they'll give you a diploma and a little tag for your dog. Here's how the statement against the pit bulls turns a little positive, Mr. Willis finds a way to make a new law, or using the discretionary power he relabels our dog's role, he uses to change it up. It is obvious he has no intention of buying the ordinance passed by the council. He never gives us the good citizens who pay taxes and abide by the law, a chance, I don't feel is right, that, I'm sorry, a chance. I don't feel it's right that just because I'm a female, that it gives him the right to use the power of his office to intimidate me and bully me. Most of the other people in town with pets are afraid to speak out in fear of retaliation. I am beyond the need of fear, and I'm not taking it anymore. The bottom line is, the state amended House Bill 14, and the city council in North made a possible for pit dogs. To be left alone, and this overzealous, overreaching city employee is still abusing, dehumanizing, excuse me, degrading and actually really discriminating against us just for hunting a dog. He still assumes because of their breed to be vicious. It is time, now it's past time, to hire a new animal control person. Mr. Willis's customer skills are insulting, cruel, and he can be labeled vicious. He doesn't agree with the city council's decision to allow a pit to prove itself, he shouldn't take out on citizens and their pets. He needs to take out with the legislators, our hope is that you hear us, that you replace Mr. Willis with someone who is not super known, that he treats citizens with less dignity, and a taxpayer who is as wayed as he deserves. Place him in another position, but not in animal control. Mr. Willis has not demonstrated control with his discretionary power, and in fact, is getting worse. Hear us, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Just a couple of comments, I understand, you can go ahead, sir. I understand a lot of you out here have the same issues, so, for keeping you to have to repeat that, I guess there's a couple of things we need to talk about. One, this city council would not be permitted to really try a city employee, or to discuss a city employee. What you need to do, there's a process for that, this gentleman's a civil servant, the process would be, there is a complaint form in the safety director's office, I believe, and you need to get it, you need to get the form, and you need to fill it out, and you need to get it back to the safety director, because I know he will take it seriously, and I know he will look at it, and he'll make sure he does. The other frustration, I understand, at least it seems to me from talking to folks out there, that, I know you're still frustrated with the pit bull legislation here in North. If you want to then you to discuss that and to try to change the legislation, I could ask Mr. Roletta, who's the head of the safety committee, to have a committee meeting, and we can come in and you can express your concerns again with that. Now, we've done that a couple times, and we voted a couple different ways, but if you want to do that, I could ask Mr. Roletta if he would do a safety committee, and have the folks in and see if they want to change this legislation and move on the council, if that would be okay with you?
I don't know where.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to say something different from what we just heard?
Different.
Go ahead. Wanna give us your name and address, your background?
My name is Charles Moore, live here in Newark, live over by Newark Catholic High School.
Just give us your address if you would.
124th, 24th Street.
Thank you.
My story's pretty much, I went through, some of it for DVD, real quick, everybody will be able to tell, I appreciate, I only have 10 copies, I know there's 14 of them, here to pass those around. It's available on YouTube as well, and obviously, there's a, we're talking about the animal control personnel, which you said is civil servant, that's the issue, mainly whether, regardless of whatever pets they are, but I'm the goat guy, I have two goats, city of Newark. I know a lot of people say, hey, wow. But, the thing is, is I've been talked with animal control personnel, several occasions, and by the way, the video is only about three or four minutes long, it pretty much gets right to the point of the whole issue. So this is about animals and pets, and it's about the civil servant and the way he conducts himself. I've heard him talking to a lot of people, everybody has a different story, and I think the bottom line is, what it comes down to, I agree 100% that we need to, we got a problem or issue. I did talk with this, and it'll be explained through this on this DVD, which is, does read, who is the public safety director, which I spoke to him publicly on the phone, there are no guidelines, okay, that he goes by, and he told me directly, that whatever, because Toby has had his job longer than him, that he will slide with Toby each and every time. This was a private conversation, and I'm repeating it, I can't, you know, verify, but if enough people file enough complaints, that's what's gonna need to take place. And I also will say to the safety director, don't know him personally, seems like a great guy, we had a great conversation on the phone, talked about Toby, because Toby has been in my house on several different occasions, for some odd reason, okay, it does come back down to a breed opposing, supposedly, because I got two goats, and then all of a sudden there's these regulations that they're homophobic, and or there's a problem with them, pygmy goats, this and that. They're much easier to take care of than dogs, they're safer than dogs, all the neighbors love them and everything else, but here's the thing I have, okay, I went through the code, and it's in the DVD, it tells you, everything's specified, is nowhere in the ordinance at all does there ever mention any word whatsoever about goats, or any type of goats, or anything like that. So here's my thing, I think everybody experienced this before, is Toby, what he's doing, he's single-handedly interpreting what he believes to be correct or incorrect. Now, I was, okay, I will say harassment, which is, you know, intimidation, it's pressure, force, coercion, and then out of duress, from the legal term, which is an action of a party or a group of people, to persuade me to do something that I know is incorrect. So if you, when you look at this DVD, you'll see, there is no provisions, okay? That's why I went through all the trouble and tried to the safety director. So out of that, I was forced, or threatened with a $100 fine, first offense, second offense, $200 fine, 30 days in jail. He was very adamant about that, just for having goats. And he, and he said, well, you can get a goat right now. Okay? I called ahead of time before we adopted the goats, when we have a wife, and talked to, and you'll hear the recording on there, and that's a message, from the Lincoln County, can't hear his name now, but he's on there, this isn't the safety director, but we checked ahead of time, so there was no provisions or exclusions, you didn't have any goats or anything like that whatsoever. The DVD program explains it all, but most, I mean, most people out in town is with the safety director single-handedly, pretty much controlling whatever he wants to be interpreting or interpreting. Now, I've heard some more stories, I'm now a witness, about him taking guns and shooting certain dogs and pups, and all kinds of bad stuff that he has done, and I would agree and totally incur, what this man says, I would encourage everybody here, if you have a problem or issue, we can all talk about our own stories, but what really needs to be done and verified, is not only get stuff on videotape, okay, and record it and have witnesses, but if there's a legitimate complaint, the complaint has to be dealt with, am I correct?
Right.
Okay. And has to be addressed, and there has to be a reply. So other than that, thank you for your time. By the way, I have to say, I appreciate everybody's time in advance, that's what I wanted to say first, but then I was gonna say thank you.
We do appreciate your time.
Anyway, I also want to say something different on this issue, that we will talk about in committee on the 29th here in this room at 5:30.
29th, 5:30. My name's Ryan Stone, I live at 39 Main Street, lived in Ohio for about eight years now, from care for both of them. I'm here specifically to ask that you repeal the breed-specific legislation that's listed in Newark, specifically 618.15, paragraph 5, subsection C. I want that order removed from the ordinance system. That's specifically what I'm looking for. My story specifically is, the first time I was here, there was a dog running loose in the neighborhood, I called up Newark Animal Control, and they almost told that they don't chase strays, that I'd catch it myself and turn it into a dog. Most recently, a couple years ago, my two dogs got out of my stockade fence yard, they had broken a couple boards on the bottom, they'd gotten out. I was at work at the time, I received a phone call from my wife at work, quick, received a phone call from the neighbor, saying that the cops were after my dogs, and they were about to shoot them. I rushed home, and when I got home, there was nobody around. My dogs were timidly on the neighbor's porch, this was another neighbor. I checked them out, my black lab had a pacer in her hideout, and I brought him to the vet the next day, and her hideout was severely damaged. I talked to the neighbor, she said that the police were there, they were trying to catch my dogs, they wouldn't let me catch them, the lab was safe, but then the pit was protecting her, they couldn't get near them, and then when the lab was able to regain her composure, they ran off the back alley, the police officers did not chase them. I was there within 45 minutes, I had worked from downtown, and I inspected my fence, and found the hole where they'd gotten out. The day before, I had been putting patio stones around to prevent them from digging out. My thing would jump over the fence, and my lab would dig under it. I had increased the height of the fence, I had a four-foot section that I put lattice on top, I thought I was set. I was short two stones that night, this was a Saturday night, I put lattice stones there, but they had moved them and dug under them. Needless to say, the animal control officer never showed up that day. The next day, I finished fixing the fence, I had worked on weekends, I worked Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so Monday, I put new slats up where they'd broken them, and I had put two more patio stones, they haven't escaped since. I was visited by the county animal control as I was working on the fence, and they looked at it and said, you're doing a good job here. That week, I had called Toby Willis up to make arrangements, to make sure that I had my papers in order. I had, this was April, I had let the tags lapse, I made sure I hadn't had it that week before I talked to Toby Willis. I didn't realize I needed a pit license, so I set up an appointment with Toby. Unfortunately, that Thursday, my brother died, and I had to run back up to Buffalo, so I had to cancel my appointment. And when I had come back, I neglected to come again, but he had called me back, and I set up another appointment, I went in, I showed my paperwork, I paid for the permit. I asked, you know, you gonna cite me for this? And he said, well, I don't know yet, I gotta present this to other people. The incident happened on April 10th, 2013. I didn't receive the citation until June 8th, 2013. That's almost three months from the incident. That's almost three months from the incident. Specifically, I would like to brief specific legislation removed. Pit bulls are no different than any other dog. When provoked, mostly, they're just lovable animals. They shouldn't need to pass a good citizenship unless that's required of all dogs. Thank you for your time.
My son is in jail now, so in ten days, for something he didn't even do, I took out the trash, he was sound asleep.
Who's your neighbor?
Oh, my name is Kami Mitchell, I'm sorry, I haven't signed you. Twenty-six East Channel Street, Newark. Okay, so anyway, I'm taking out the trash, I thought the door latched, it didn't, he's sound asleep, I don't even know it, I go out all night looking for his two dogs, they're both pit bulls. They've never been in trouble, nothing. And so, then the next morning, he gets up to get ready for work, well, I don't even say nothing to him, he thinks they're asleep in my bedroom. And so he goes to work, and I'm thinking, well, I'll find them before he gets back. Well, I'd already called down, they hadn't seen or anything, but then Toby found them and called down, that's how he found out me. So anyway, so, we didn't even know, we even had to go to court, we both went to court for the same exact thing, for non-confinement of the dog, and they're not even my dogs, they're his dogs, but because I live there with my son, I had to go to court too, we had two separate court things. So he goes up for non-confinement, he gets three hundred dollar fine, and ten days in jail, and he didn't even do anything. I mean, he had them confined, I unconfined them. And so then I go to jail, and of course, he had it against my experience, very, so I go to jail, I get just get, you know, fifty dollar fine for each dog, which totaled two hundred sixty-six with court costs. So now he's in jail, spent ten days, and he, his boss even wrote a really nice letter seeing if he could get work release. He was denied work release. And then his boss called him, wanted to know why he was denied it, and they said, well, it's because he had a prior conviction of no dog, of his dogs not being confined, which is not true. He's never had, you know, the dogs have never gotten out, never gotten in trouble. So then I call up, wanting to know why they said that, and she said, well, it's not on the paper, it's just written no on the paper. And I just think something needs to be done, because, I mean, it's, and then this other girl's spending days in jail, just because her dog got out. And I don't care if they've got something on their record, I mean, my son had a record four years before now, but he's straightened up, he takes care of me, you know, and I bring surgery with coronavirus, and he keeps me, but now he's off work for ten days, and, you know, now when he gets out and he does fencing, and he even asked, he said, can you postpone it to like the end of January or February, to where the ground's frozen, you know, and that way I won't lose much work. And they, you know, and that way I can work now and put money back for them, and they denied it. And it's just, and then the bailiff sat out there and yelled at him in front of everybody out there, he said, you see a judge said no? He goes, and that means, you know, no, what are you gonna do? You gonna, you gonna pay for my job when I'm out of work and I, you know, can't work? Are you gonna take care of me? And so he gave him a week extra off, and me, go to jail the next week. So anyway, and then I told my son, because we came down to this last thing that you guys was gonna have, me and my son did, we didn't know it was canceled. Well, Toby's sitting out front, this thing, he watches us go in, watches us go out. And I told him, I said, told my son, I said, you watch, he's gonna harass me as soon as you go to jail. Very gay, my son went to jail, there was a card on our door, there was no reason, our dogs have the AKC, good citizenship thing, they're insured, they've got everything, I mean, there's no more we can do. And then I took the three papers to him, showing that, you know, the one does have the good citizenship, because it's only twice a year, so the other one can't go until May, which we didn't have to hurt through anyway, but we're going to. And we even took them through the eight-week class. Well, anyway, so when I took him to the three papers, he says, well, I have to have a written paper from them. He goes, even though I spoke to them, and I know that, you know, that she's going through the class and everything, I need a paper written saying that she has. So I go back home, and I call, and that lady says, that's all we give, is just those three papers, and I said, well, that's what I gave him. And she goes, we don't, you know, write special papers for Toby. So, I, I went back and I called Toby, he goes, well, I just got done talking to her. And anyway, so I thought everything was wrapped up okay. While that day that my son goes to jail and get a card, I call him, I'm kind of upset, because I know he's gonna harass me about something, but I don't know what. So he goes, well, he finally calls me back, he goes, did you get that paper? And I said, what paper? He goes, the one, you know, written, saying that your dog passed the class. I said, no, Toby, I told you, she don't write a paper, you know, just those three forms is all they give. Well, he goes, well, you have to have that paper. I said, Toby, what do you want me to do? Pull down her butt? I can't do it, you know, she ain't gonna give it to me. I said, so what are you gonna do if I don't get that paper? He goes, well, then you're just gonna have to get rid of the dog. He goes, it's gonna, I have to go out of Newark City limits. And I said, she's passed the good citizenship pass, you know, why should she have to leave? He goes, because she has to have a, I have to have a written paper, you know, written by then, saying that she passed the class. So then I got upset. Well, anyway, then he goes, I said, well, I don't know the number to call them, you know, and I said, do you have? He goes, no, well, let me call you back. So then he calls me back, about, I don't know, forty-five minutes later, it's like a whole different person talking to him. He's like, oh, nice, oh, don't worry about it, it's all resolved, he says. He says, now just tell your son to make sure that by November third next year, or, yeah, next year, he says, make sure on my desk, I have where she went through the citizenship class again, because she has to do that every year. I said, well, it will be there. And I said, so you got your letter? And he kinda went around, but he didn't tell me yes, but he didn't tell me no. He just said, we got it resolved, so I don't know. So now, I just wanna know what to do if he harasses me again, because it's like, can't call the law, because he is the law, or whatever, and it's like, what do you do?
I think we've kind of got the gist of it, and again, if it's an issue with the animal control officer, we need to file a report with the safety director, he has those reports, and you need to do that, and I'll guarantee you can follow up with that.
So what if he comes to take the dog, then what do you do?
First, you're gonna have to file a report for anything. You guys are gonna have to file a report, and I'm gonna do some investigating.
All right, shit, I'll tell you about it. All right, thank you.
And on the twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth, we'll do the committee at five-thirty, and discuss the legislation, see if the committee wants to do anything, if you want to talk about taking some of that, what's the gentleman, taking some of that legislation out of there, that'll be the time to discuss it. So, are, you wanna say something different?
Yes, I am. I'm here, but I don't live in the city, but I live in Newark.
Okay, sit down.
I got it either, I got it either.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'd like you to pass, you guys to pass this around and tell me which one of these dogs is a pit bull.
Just want to say a question, just go ahead.
I mean, just, okay, then I would like you to take a couple of minutes to look through there, and read all the things that aren't true about pit bulls, like the walking dogs. And then, I just really thought, I'm not gonna tell the whole story, but there's a young lady that's staying in jail right now, is gonna miss Christmas with her little girl, she's never been away from her child, ever, and she's never been in trouble, and her dogs did not bite either, and they're pit bulls. And have to, I think I need to take it to do the, file a report.
Okay.
And I have other things, but it's still the same as the other stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll watch, we'll get.
Anyone else for citizens' comments? I think we've got the pit gate thing pretty well solved, is there anyone else who would like to, yes sir? Or at least for the seniors? You can tell us what number when we get through here. Yes, sir?
Yeah, hi, I'm Dennis Kuschon, three-twenty-seven East Broadway in Granville. Thank you for letting me visit with you today. You may have read in the paper that a couple of weeks ago, Granville decriminalized marijuana. I was the fellow who pushed that, I'm not a pot smoker, I'll break it myself, but I stumbled across that marijuana was still a criminal offense in Granville, Ohio, had decriminalized in nineteen seventy-seven. And under home rule, local governments don't have to follow that. And so I've been burned together a list of what all the home rule laws are in Ohio, and I found that, and the law director will appreciate this, that there are still two communities in Lincoln County that criminalize marijuana possession. And Newark is one, which has it as a third-degree misdemeanor, and Heath is the other. And I wanted to encourage you to consider decriminalizing like the rest of Ohio has long done, primarily for economic reasons and job reasons for your citizens. While I was researching this, I realized, in Granville, I realized that it was primarily a Newark issue, because fifty-five percent of the people charged in Granville were Newark residents, thirty percent of them were black. And the shocking thing was, it may be no surprise, is that Granville residents and Newark students got diverted and didn't pay the same consequences that the Newark people. So I wrote what I thought was kind of amusing, a little blog post, saying, I haven't seen a black person in days, so why are nearly thirty percent of the people in my community who are prosecuted for pot, and there's been a hundred and fifty marijuana charges over the last five, hundred and fifty of the last five years? So it's not that many, I don't know how many Newark is, but it's probably more. So I wanted to just explain to you why you should refer it to one of your committees for two key issues. As a third-degree or numbered misdemeanor, when the city council did this probably thirty or forty years ago, it wasn't as big a deal. But as the lawyers call the collateral consequences of having a criminal record today are much, much higher. It makes it hard to get a license to be a teacher, an accountant, it makes it hard to get a job at a daycare center, to be a nurse's assistant, to be a nurse. So you're effectively putting your own citizens in a situation, whereas if a Newark person with a marijuana possession arrest tries to become, say, a nurse's assistant, but the person with the same situation from Petascola will get the job, because you have a hard time reading those state criteria that have probably been added to the law subsequently after it was made a third-degree misdemeanor, whenever. It also makes it hard to get student financial aid, it makes it hard to join the military. There was one fella who got busted in the military officially, you can get around it, if you have two criminal drug offenses on your record, you can't join the military. So you think that two was a lot, but there was one fella, Jeremy from Newark, who was busted in Granville for doing the same offense, marijuana paraphernalia, and marijuana. He was twenty, he's never gonna join the military. My personal view is, you want these stoners to work. The last thing that you want it to do is sitting at home playing the Xbox, or not getting a job. And I don't know what your numbers are, but the median age of the offender in Granville was nineteen. A lot of them were, people worked at the restaurants, people pulled over on the highway. And for me, you're just kicking out the very first rung of the economic ladder. I don't smoke pot, but when I was nineteen, I did smoke pot. And the final thing with the, with the job opportunities, even if you're applying for a job that's not licensed, or not state-regulated, it harms you, because when you go into careerbuilder.com, you apply online on Monster, they ask you, do you have a criminal record? And you get filtered this way. And, but again, a person with Petascola, it's the same thing, he's clear, you know, person in Newark, you just kicked him out of the nursing assistant job. And I don't think that's something that you want to do. The second part, which is actually separate, is suspending licenses. Home rule gives you the choice, and your law director will appreciate this, because I've gone down the list, I've looked it up, there's different home rule communities, and there was a nineteen ninety-two federal mandate tucked into a highway bill that said, states need to suspend licenses for marijuana offenders unless they opt out. More than thirty states have opted out and don't do it. Ohio's in the process of opting out. The Senate has approved it, the House has approved it, and then the House probably this week is gonna opt out. However, then they have to send it to the Department of Transportation, they have to send it back, so it probably has about two years of process to actually change the state law. However, as a home rule issue, you can do what you want. And the majority of Ohio doesn't suspend. Cleveland never suspends, Dayton never suspends, Toledo never suspends, it's not even in their law. The amusing thing is, there are several vendors who update municipal codes based on what the state has done. Conway Green, WH Drain, Immunity Code are three of them, and when they update it, they put may suspend. American Legal Publishing out of Cincinnati, which has about a third of the market, puts shall suspend. You contract with an illegal publishing to update it, so for this totally random arbitrary reason, you are a shall-suspend community. Granville is may suspend, Petascola is may suspend, et cetera, depends who your contract is, and it's really a decision that you didn't even know you were making. No one I've talked to has known this until I started going down through it. But the reason that the license is important is, I like to say, a murderer can drive himself to prison in Ohio, but someone caught for pot in a non-driving offense can't. So I'll make just a couple of final points, and I'll shut up. Seventy-five percent of the people who get their license suspended drive anyway. And when I was researching, what's going on in Granville, I called twenty, about twenty of your people who got busted for it, they're all driving. And when you get your license suspended, forty-two percent of them lose their jobs. And I think that's not the result that you want. You don't want the stoners to lose their license, to lose their job, stay home and play the Xbox. You want them to join the army, you want them to get to work, you want to get them functioning. So the final point is, the penalty isn't that different. In Granville, it's a hundred and fifty bucks for a minor misdemeanor. For a third-degree misdemeanor, which is what we had until we changed it like you, is two hundred and sixty bucks. The real difference is the long-term consequences to people's lives, and they don't even know what's happening to them. They don't know when they apply for a job, they go into this pile instead of into this pile. The economic role being of your Newark residents is important, because when I talk to those funny people, they don't know how to fight for themselves, like the rich people in Granville do. If my teenage kids got busted for pot, I mean, it's not gonna happen, but he's gonna get a criminal record. And even though the law is neutral on the surface, in the way it's applied, it's not the way it works in the real world. So I also asked my friend Victoria, who was trying enough to come over to Granville and represent the Newark people, and why it wasn't important, if I could come and speak to you, if she would speak to us. So I would encourage you to listen to Victoria, and to refer to a committee, and if you want more of my blather, I'm happy to blather another time, just do a committee.
Hi, my name is Victoria Khan, and twenty-four Jefferson Street, Newark, Ohio. And really, I'm just here to kind of follow up with what Dennis just said. We have a ton of people in Newark over the years, I've heard horror stories forever, about people losing their licenses for nothing, maybe a little bit of pot, maybe no pot, maybe a, maybe a pipe, go, you end up most likely getting sent to a, oh, lab, which is, you know, our alcohol prevention program, you might do some jail time. The big problem is, the record that you do acquire, you know, everybody can pull, usually can come up with a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollar fine. But you do end up with the extenuating circumstances, a lot of times people might, or the, the police department will impound their cars. If they're- If they're living on a minimal income and they get the only car they were able ever to acquire in their life impounded, and the very first thing they have to do to keep their job, or... I've got neighbors that are in this situation, two babies. You know, you've got to go, you've got doctor's appointments, these kind of things. You can't do anything without a car. The cost of the impound, to get it back where you need it. And then, so that's just the beginning of the problem. This continues. I mean, the whole thing is a problem. And I know, I've been in Newark now, let's see, about 50 years. Forty-nine years I've lived in Newark. And so I've seen where, if you go anywhere else, when you see people on bicycles, a lot of it is because they're doing it to go green, you know, to help the environment, these kind of things. You come to Newark, you see everybody on bicycles. I mean, no offense, but it's because everybody's lost their licenses in their cars. And usually for much or nothing. And they end up in that hole where, I mean, I've talked to people, but I've had their license been gone for 20 years. It's like, well, why? You know, well, I've just never been able to afford all those hundreds of dollars that it costs to get things, you know, back through the bureau and through the courts and blah, blah, blah. So I just want to reiterate that it is a real problem for people having this happen to them. When it's not really even required of our city government to do that. So, you know, I just appeal to the, for the people that if we could rethink that, perhaps change that language, about language from "shall" to "may," or even "shall not" would be great. We would be doing our citizens and our county and really everyone a favor. So that's, that's with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in this first section of citizen comments that hadn't spoken yet?
May I ask a few concerns on this?
Hang on just a second. Yes, go ahead. Well, anybody else that hasn't spoken yet? Yes, sir. That will be you and the law legislation.
My name is Roland West. I live at 420 Moore Seager Street. I've lived in American High for 80 years. And here I'm, I just heard that they're trying to legalize marijuana. I'm strictly against that because marijuana, I guess itself, isn't too bad. But marijuana, soon the kick wears off of it. We've got to have more power. So now we go to cocaine or we go to heroin. And then we're going to legalize heroin and cocaine too? Now, I'm not going to live here that long, 80 years old, you know. I hope I get up and wake up tomorrow morning, but...
I do too.
I don't want to see Newark going down this shallow road where it's going to be like it was back in the 1800s. We've done, we have hangings, gunshot, gunfights in bars. I don't want that in here. I mean, I don't see any reason that we should legalize something that is not good for you. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
One more, yes, sir?
I hear this issue, and it's very similar to the issue with the dogs. And this is how I wanted to relate it. It's time we stop punishing something that's a social issue. If because of marijuana they commit a crime, let's punish the crime. Same way with the dogs. A dog is vicious if it commits a crime. Let's not label the dog vicious when it hasn't committed the crime or someone like it, something like it has committed the crime. So this is what I wanted to say about marijuana. Marijuana is a social issue, needs to be dealt on a social level. The law, you should be using it to violate criminal actions. I believe the use of marijuana should be considered a criminal action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone need a five-minute break before we start legislation? Are you okay? You guys don't want to stay for the meeting, you can. Nikki, I think your stuff is right here at the end.
Right here.
Your stuff, I think, is... Okay, let's start our legislation. We'll, 29th at 5:30 here in this room for the law votes.
I'm sorry, can I hear this?
29th at 5:30.
29th at 5:30. What?
Here, this is what the committee will talk about this.
Oh, okay. Thank you all. Thank you for your time, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Merry Christmas or happy holidays.
How was it, everybody?
Why? I think that was my first question. I took it seriously.
Okay, next we have one, it's on the first reading. 14 dash 40.
Thank you again, Mark.
Thank you.
Ordnance 14 dash 40 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, in ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the City of North Ohio during the year ending December 31st, 2015. And this is for the general fund.
First reading of 14 dash 40, what does she wish, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President. Move to waive the two-day review rule.
Question by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day review. Second by Mrs. Floyd, why is that, Mr. Blake?
We need to fund government, starting January 1st. Imagine, Mr. Blake.
Let's call a roll of the vote to waive the two-day review rule.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos? Mrs. Floyd? Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Paul? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmee? Mr. Ralph? Mr. Roetta? And Mr. Blake?
Waiving two-day review was passed 10-0, Mr. Blake?
Moved to a 14-40.
Question by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14 dash 40?
Mr. President, I just want to say that this is the first time that several of us have gone through the budget process. And it was very important for me to make sure that there was open dialogue and communication between council and the administration. And I think what we saw last Monday, current committee, was a good dialogue, especially for some of us first-year members to understand, even some of the veteran members to understand what these different funds are actually funding. What is the taxpayer paying for in 2015? So I just want to say thank you to council for the meeting last week. And thank you to the mayor and to the auditor for entertaining questions and having a good dialogue last week. So with that, I'll pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been on this council for 14 years, and I've never voted against a budget until this evening. It's one of the, it's a situation in which I was told last year that the deficit spending was going to stop after last year. We're doing it again this year by taking funds from the budget stabilization account again. I was told last year that if at the end of the year there was any money that we did not need for the budget, it would be moved back into the budget stabilization fund. There's legislation this evening that is just playing it back into the cash carryover. We have indicated that, you know, I think the comment was, other cities have had massive layoffs and just been in dire straits. And they have that, oh crap moment. Well, with this budget and where we're putting ourselves financially, we're headed right there. Last year, it was asked of council, and there was a majority on council who voted in support of increasing taxes for roads because they felt that it was important that street paving get more funding. But yet with this budget, the same council is saying it's okay to reduce funds that are going into the capital improvements, of course, paving and changing of the percentage. You're also going to be told that, well, we're going to use the funds that are going to be utilized from the premium holiday because there's going to be a favorable situation as far as our self-insured health insurance. Well, council voted for that to try to make up for the problems in that we were behind in the roads. The same thing that everybody in here was saying, well, we need to change this and increase taxes in order to do that. Well, we had something set up, and now that's going by the wayside. So we're going in the wrong direction. For the first time ever, the safety forces are below the percentage that they receive with the general fund back prior to the half percent increase. I guess, you know, last year my opinion mattered, and I was afforded the opportunity. And, you know, I actually felt as if I was, that folks listened, and particularly the administration listened this year when it went on deaf ears. And it always comes back to the fact that they say, well, you didn't ask any questions, you didn't come to me. Well, I indicated my concerns last year, and then we'd do the same thing this year. It is deficit spending. We are utilizing funds from the budget stabilization fund. We are going in the wrong direction. We are in jeopardy of not only layoffs, but massive layoffs in the future. We know what's pending in the legislation at the state level and what could come to all small municipalities if that appears as if that probably will come to fruition. So we aren't preparing for it at all. We're actually putting ourselves in a worse situation by utilizing the fund that is there for such an occasion. So for the first time in my 14 years on council, I will not support this budget as it's putting the city in great jeopardy. We need to do something, and there's nothing on the horizon as far as correcting it for next year. And we have even larger pay raises next year. So where are we going to be next year? Even further deficit spending, where are we going to get the money from? Or are we going to lay off more people than what we would if we would have done something this year? So the longer you wait, the higher the price. And so I cannot support this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, first, let me say that I think that Mr. Marmee has made a lot of good points on it. I'm going to vote for this, but I've got really serious concerns. First, you know, I would really want to thank Mr. Blake for the comprehensive committee that he showed last week and for the excellent questions that he asked his chairman. I don't know what the answer is. But the points that Mr. Marmee made are very well taken by me in that 2016 is going to be very weak for our city. I'm not sure that the answer is to pass this budget, but what I know is if we don't pass this budget, you know, we're going to be looking at layoffs of city employees. There are so many things I'm concerned about here. The three premium holiday. The impact that that's going to have on the health insurance program. What that's going to do in 2016 as far as health insurance rates on the city and the employees. It is, it's just extremely concerning. For me or anyone else to just say, I'm going to vote against this, as concerned as we might be about what's going to happen at the end of next year. I mean, I could vote against this because I oppose this fire station. But I don't see the logic of me voting against an entire budget because I oppose the fire station. I mean, we're going to have close to $300,000 to $350,000 in debt service on that fire station. I mean, right there is fireworks, police officers, and firefighters that could be paid with that debt service on that new fire station. Give me a shiny new fire station, but we're going to have a hell of a time manning it. So, you know, I'm worried about our priorities. You know, I'm concerned about the premium holidays. I'm concerned about the potential of layoffs. Now, you know, you can argue that because we gave what I view as a very small pay raises for our city employees, that that has put this thing out of balance. That is only one small piece of the pie that has us on a crash course in 2016. And the biggest piece, the biggest piece, and I know I'm a broken record on this, is what the state of Ohio is doing to the city. I mean, I'm sort of assuming maybe Bart Jove's shared this analysis with other members of council of the impact that this House bill brought. Which, by the way, I have spoken out on before, and I know many members of this council have. Category after category, section after section of that loss, of that law, the loss of revenue, the loss of revenue, increased cost, increased administrative burden, revenue loss, problematic for our city, potential revenue loss. I think there's like 12 categories in that bill which are categorized as losses of revenue to our city. I mean, we are on a major collision course in 2016. And the biggest factor is, in my opinion, reckless decisions at the state level. But we're going to have to deal with them.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake. Anyone else before Mr. Blake speaks again? Mr. Blake?
You know, I just want to add on that I think when we look at this budget, or any budget, no matter if you're at your employer or you run your own business or whatever it is, you have to look at, you have scarce resources, both financial and manpower. We all know that a majority of this budget goes to salaries and benefits of our civic employees. And, you know, a lot of them have had to take on extra duties because of the loss of local government funding from the state and because the loss of the state tax from the state, which this city has had a 50% reduction in local government funding according to our auditor. And also, we received, we used to receive an average of $800,000 to the general fund, but we lost that from the state tax. And so we can't just look at decisions that this council has made related to this budget, but there has been those external state decisions that have directly affected our services to our citizens. And, you know, I think that it's very important for all of us to, as Mr. Guthrie had mentioned, you know, contact those state officials and to try to get support back for the cities, because we've lost that, we really have. And so I just want to add that, reiterate that, which Mr. Guthrie mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else? Please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14 dash 40 passes 9 to 1. Next on the first reading, we have 14 dash 41.
Ordnance 14 dash 41 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, and, excuse me, in ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the City of North Ohio during the year ending December 31st, 2015 for the grant funds.
First reading of 14 dash 41, what does she wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I move to waive the two-day review rule.
Question by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day review rule. Second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
Once again, is to provide appropriations for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Please call a roll, waive the two-day review rule.
Mr. Bugg? Mr. Cos? Mrs. Floyd? Mr. Guthrie? Ms. Paul? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmee? Mr. Ratt? Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
Ordinance 14-42 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the City of North Ohio during the year ending December 31st, 2015 for the grant funds.
You've heard the first reading of 14-42, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
I, once again, fund appropriations beginning January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Hon, please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-41 passes 10 to 1. Next, we have 14-42.
Ordinance 14-42 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the City of North Ohio during the year ending December 31st, 2015 for the grant funds.
You've heard the first reading of 14-42, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
I move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
I, once again, fund appropriations beginning January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Hon, please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-42 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have 14-42.
Ordinance 14-42 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the City of North Ohio during the year ending December 31st, 2015 for the grant funds.
You've heard the first reading of 14-42, what is your wish?
I move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake.
I, once again, fund appropriations beginning January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Hon, please call a roll of vote on 14-42.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-42 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have 14-43.
Ordinance 14-43 by Ms. Hall, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Blake, and ordinance amending Section 890.13 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North, providing for the allocation of income tax revenues.
You've heard the first reading of 14-43, what is your wish?
I move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Ms. Hall moves to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall, good reason.
I'll balance the budget there first.
Thank you. Hon, please call a roll to vote away the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Ms. Hall?
I move to adopt 14-43A.
Motion to adopt 14-43, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-43?
I think, again, it needs to be done in order to get the balance of the budget.
Is there any other discussion on possible amendments?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment. I'd like to substitute 14-43A, which is in your packet.
Would you like to tell us what that amendment is, Mrs. Floyd?
Basically, what it does is say that it's just for the fiscal year 2015. If you look in Section 1, it says that the first day of fiscal year 2015 and continuing thereafter until the last day of fiscal year 2015. So that at this time next year, if they want the same 4.0 up, the administration wants the same 4.0, we'll all have to come to council for that.
Any discussion on the amendment?
We need a second.
Oh, second, second by Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you.
Mr. Ratt?
Can I ask the law director a question?
Sure.
Mr. Law Director, if this event, if this ordinance is passed, and the final day of 2015 comes and first day of 2016 arrives, and nothing has been, nothing else has been passed, do we automatically revert back to the 2014?
Are you talking about 14-43A?
Yes.
If 14-43A is enacted on judge and council does nothing else with regard to the allocation of funds for general fund versus capital improvements, then the formula would revert back to 8515 for fiscal year 2016. And that's basically what section, the new Section 2, in 14-43A, there's a new Section 2, and that's essential what that says.
Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that I absolutely agree with this amendment, but I also am fully prepared for next year to be looking at a formula that's worse than what this amendment does.
Mr. Guthrie, anyone else? Hon, please call to roll to vote on the amendment.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-43 has been amended. Is there any discussion on 14-43, and has it been amended? Mr. Marmy?
Yes. Once again, I believe that we are heading down a slippery slope here with changing this formula. We are anticipating that we are going to have premium holidays. We are just, you know, a major illness accident or something, some kind of situation with our health insurance away from us not receiving the same premium holiday or any of those premium holidays in which, once again, we would be in dire straits as far as our capital improvements. I listened to the commissioners when they said that, you know, this money, this revenue that they're receiving from the casinos is something that they should not monkey around with as far as trying to incorporate it into their regular budget. We are doing the same thing with our premium holidays right now. That should not be money that should be utilized as far as putting into our budget, anticipating that we are going to have those premium holidays until it actually occurs. I don't think that we should be including that into the budget, and that's how they're basically saying that we're utilizing the same amount of dollars in our capital improvements fund. I'm not in agreement with switching this back. Again, I've been on this council for a number of years and we always said we have to make sure that our capital improvements, we don't get further and further behind and making sure that if we do have any opportunity to get ahead, we try to get ahead. And this is slipping back to the point where you're just taking care of today instead of looking at tomorrow, and you have to look at tomorrow also. If you don't plan, you know, no one plans to fail, they just fail to plan. And so, with that, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Yeah, yeah, discussion on 14-43 has amended. Mr. Ratt?
Yeah, I am going to support this today as a vote of faith. And I haven't been on the council for as long as Mr. Marmy has, but I have been here for a while and I've seen the capital improvement budget fluctuating forward and backward. Because I've seen it come back, I've come willing to take a leap of faith this year. But it seems like we always dip into capital improvements to try to balance the budget and try to get, find more money. The original intent was to have this at 8515 and any premium holidays that we got would also supplement the capital improvement budget so that we could actually do some paying. Now, we're using the premium holidays as a main source of funding rather than additional funding. I mean, I would take a leap of faith for this year. Next year, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Anyone else, Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to say, as I said, I'm going to support this, but I, one thing I would really like to see happen here, and that's something that what the administration will need to keep a close eye on, the numbers that were used for workers' permit were, I believe, higher than what the cost is going to be because of, you know, the estimate is that we're going to save a couple hundred thousand next year. I'd like to see that couple hundred thousand used for police and fire equipment, and I'd like for us to watch that, see if those numbers are coming in lower and see if we can't identify the use of those funds for police and fire equipment because we know that we're way behind in both of those divisions as far as replacing the needed equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mrs. Floyd?
I just want to say, I agree with what's being said. I don't think anybody up here wants to cut money to capital improvements. On the other hand, as has been stated earlier, most of our budget goes to pay for salaries and benefits for city employees. That's where most of the general fund budget goes. And when you're talking in terms of that, you know, we have to do something. And as has been said by several people, the loss of local government funds and the state tax and what's probably going to happen with House Bill 5, you know, there are times it's just, thank you state legislature, it's just, you know, they're creating the problem that we then have to deal with and it makes it very difficult. But obviously, I'm going to support this.
Mrs. Floyd, anyone else? Hon, please call a roll of vote on 14-43 as amended.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-43 amended passes 9 to 1. Next, we go on resolutions on the second reading, 14-92.
Resolution 14-92 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Ratt, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporations.
You've heard the second reading of 14-92, what is your wish?
Mr. President. Blake? Move to adopt 14-92.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-92? Seeing none, hon, please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-92 passes 10 to 1. Next, on the second reading, we have 14-94.
Resolution 14-94 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the City of North Ohio for 2015.
You've heard the second reading of 14-94, what is your wish? Mr. President, Cost?
I move to take a motion to adopt 14-94.
Motion by Mr. Cost?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-94? Seeing none, hon, please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roetta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-94 passes 10 to 1. Back to resolutions on the first reading, or now the resolutions on the first reading, 14-95.
Resolution 14-95 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Ratt, a resolution authorizing the director of public service to execute a contract for reimbursement of legal representation of indigent persons for calendar year 2015 with the Licking County Board of Commissioners for the City of North Licking County, Ohio.
14-95 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-96.
Resolution 14-96 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Ratt, a resolution affirming the base rate for the storm water utility service charge as authorized by the Codified Ordinance of the City of North Ohio.
14-96 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-97.
Resolution 14-97 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Ratt, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of North Ohio to execute and file an allocation with the Missingham Watershed Conservancy District and to prove, or, excuse me, provide all information and documentation required to become eligible for possible funding assistance.
14-97, will be held?
Mr. Cost, need to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule for 14-97.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Cost, second by Mrs. Floyd. Why would that be, Mr. Cost?
There is a year-end filing deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Hon, please call a roll to vote to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Cos?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 1497.
Motion by Mr. Cos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any other discussion on 14-97? Seeing none, Alton, please call and vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-97 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 14-98.
Resolution 14-98 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. A resolution adopting the updated countywide all-natural hazard mitigation plan for Licking County, Ohio.
14-98 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-99.
Resolution 14-99 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. This is a resolution for the addition of a turn lane at State Route 16, eastbound off-ramp at Church Street exit, ramp C 45054 within the city of Newark, Ohio.
14-99 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-100.
Resolution 14-100 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
Thirdly, first reading of 14-100. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Blake, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Why is that, Mr. Blake?
To clean up the votes before the end of the year, and it's also a fund for a second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Alton, please call and vote to waive the two-day reading rule, 14-100.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived on 14-100, Mr. Blake?
I move to adopt 1494.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 14-100? Mr. Marmee?
Yes, Mr. President. Here is just another example. We not only try to maintain our budget stabilization, but we're pulling more funds from our budget stabilization, $20,000, but yet we're moving funds from other areas in order for a cash carryover. So, the rainy day fund is being depleted even further than what it was, and we're just creating a cash carryover. So, we deficit spend, or even deficit spending on the last day of the year even more so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else? Seeing none, Alton, please call and vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-100 passes 9 to 1. Next, we have 14-101.
Resolution 14-101 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff. This is a resolution for replacement of deficient bridge FN 4560507 carrying CR 204 Buena Vista Street over cemetery run in the city of Newark. This work will be performed as part of PIB 97470, cost CR 19, license CR 204TR11.
Thank you for that information. And after all that, 14-101 will be held for a second reading. Is there any other discussion? Mr. President? Mr. Raff?
I believe our engineer expressed interest and would be interested in supporting his interest in asking to waive the two-day reading rule. So, what happens to expedite this project?
So, you're asking to waive the two-day reading rule?
I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Once again, Mr. Raff, is there a reason?
This will give the opportunity for O to have to meet deadlines and expedite the project.
Okay. Alton, please call and vote to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Raff to adopt 14-101. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Alton, please call and vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-101 passes. And finally, this evening, we have 14-102.
Resolution 14-102 by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for demolition of 110 through 114 Union Street and declaring it an emergency.
This 14-102 is an emergency. It only has one reading. What is your wish? For Mr. Cos, make a motion to adopt. Motion by Mr. Cos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 14-102?
Just the deadline, the filing deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Anyone else? Alton, please call and vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-102 passes, and that takes care of the legislation for this evening. Thank you for your attention. Alton, my longest meeting of the year, but in a board. Thanks. Next, we have comments for citizens. Our second opportunity is in one light speed.
Nancy Lailu, 7441 Stewart Road. I had two items that I'd like to speak to this evening. Before I get started, though, whether you love or hate what people have done and said tonight, I applaud everyone for their civic engagement and coming before council. We do some civic engagement education, and it's a hard process for people to come up, and they feel very intimidated, and your heart starts beating faster, and you get nervous, as I am now. But I just want to applaud whoever's left here. I don't think they all left. Because to me, that's what this is about, the civic engagement piece with their elected officials. So, there. With that said, two things I wanted to speak to tonight. On October 20th, council approved an annexation, unbeknownst to me because I haven't been paying a lot of attention, shame on me, annexation of 47 acres on Licking Springs. Mr. Watson has asked for that, and you all approved it. I recently, last week, became aware of it and went and attended the planning commission, the second hearing at the county commissioners to talk about the annexation. I was there along, I live in Newton Township, that's in my backyard, basically. Mr. Marmee's familiar with the area. So, I got a call from my trustee. I'm our zoning appeals board chair, and so we have our fiscal officer, our fire chief, anyways, their lawyer and other people were there to talk about this annexation that you all approved on October 20th. And I guess, at the meeting, the commissioners delayed the vote due to a highway responsibility ordinance that I think Mr. Sassen has either been made aware of or will be involved in writing, but that we were told the city has never really, I don't think you've ever done one before, a highway responsibility ordinance, meaning you have to take care of that road. I don't think it's a shared road. There's so much feet that's shared by the county, and that'll be city, county, so it was a little over my head. The reason I bring this up, it is especially with all the talk tonight about deficit spending and no money for paving, where's the money going to come from when we're rubber-stamping annexations into the city and we're adding more roads to be paved and snowplowed? Where is that money going to come from? So, Licking Springs will then, because I'm pretty sure the annex will go through, landowner rights, Trump, just about anything, if Mr. Sassen writes this highway responsibility ordinance, which I'll be curious to see what it says. You don't have to vote for that, by the way, if you don't want to. What you, when you approve that annexation, you, I have it here, you approve the street maintenance, including repair, reconstruction, and widening if necessary, and snowplowing. These services will be provided by the city of Newark Street Department. They'd be available immediately upon annexation. So, I guess I would just caution you, the next time an annexation comes up, to maybe think about the cost of annexing. I know there's some over on River Road area, I believe, that is coming up, or that's already been annexed. With the limited funds you have already, you might want to take a second look at the annexations that are going on. I know the city always wants more to go into the city, but at this time, it might not be the wisest thing to do because of funding. Second thing I want to speak to, of course, my pet peeve, fair housing. I came before council June 2nd and spoke about the fair housing program, which is ran by Mr. Eager. And I have his contract here, and in the contract, it says, under educational programs and activities, the primary is to, to any effective fair housing program is a comprehensive fair housing education plan. This effort works in cooperation with the enforcement effort of the program by ensuring that residents of the city and members of the housing industry have access to training that will help them understand their rights and responsibility regarding fair housing regulation, their training. In Mr. Eager's contract, he's contracted to do, let's see, 10 training sessions per year. To date, Mr. Eager has put on two training sessions, to my knowledge, and that, that's, I'm going off his monthly reports, which I have a copy of, if anyone would like to look at. That's the monthly report that comes into Mr. Mauder's office. He's done 10 training sessions this year, and they were done in February. And he's not documented any other training sessions. He also was contracted to hold monthly sessions, January through November, the first and third Tuesday of the month, from 10 to 3. That's five hours, so that's 10 hours a month. He's manned the, that's the fair housing office. He's done this seven out of the 11 last 11 months. These are things in his contract, and he's paid a little over $1,200 a month to do this. So, my question to you is, why are we paying somebody who's not doing their job when you're in such a fiscal crisis? Why are we doing that? Because it's in his contract? Well, I don't know a whole lot of people that if they don't show up and do their job, that they get paid, especially your hourly workers like myself. If I don't go to work, I mean, I guess I could take sick time or vacation, but if I didn't have those benefits, I wouldn't be paid. So, I just, I know he has two more years on his contract. I know Mr. Mauder is doing his best to try and stay on top of Mr. Eager. Some of you, when I spoke in June, I talked about the annual report, and you'd ask for an electronic form. That was June 2nd. I don't believe we have that yet, as of a few weeks ago. Six months, and we can't get a report from, that's a 2013 report, an electronic format. That's not, that's just not right. So, I know Mr. Marmee last time said that that's, you know, falls underneath the administration, but I always like to come before council and let them know how the, the city's dollars are being spent. This is a small program, but the training, to me, is extremely important, especially when you have landlord and tenant training. He also does training for, I believe, people in the real estate industry. So, this person is, in my opinion, not doing his job and collecting a paycheck. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court. Thank you for this opportunity. In these challenging economic times that you're describing in this meeting, I think it's important, very important, that you are fiscally responsible and take guardianship of the budget. I also think that it's very important to not just do that, but to look beyond that in a lot of different ways. One is to consider what state Newark is in and what conditions exist in the city, and to be thinking about other methods or other means of financial support, as well as seeking the right distribution of state funds that have been cut back. In line with this, I just want to make a few comments about improving housing conditions in Newark. The Department of State has levied fines against landlords who have not taken care of their property. The number of these fines has increased, and property maintenance has been working hard in trying to check out complaints and unsafe conditions. It is critical in this regard that property maintenance and fire departments be adequately staffed, highly skilled, and well-paid. I commend the firefighters' union and its leadership for working to ensure this. My comments here are focused on overall housing conditions in Newark. The Citizens Committee for Housing Rights has raised the question of safe housing many times, and I want to focus our attention on buildings near the community gardens in South and Central Newark. I understand that Newark landlord Lori Trickle appeared before city council several weeks ago to appeal his case, claiming that he was being unjustly targeted by property maintenance staff. He also described having gone to jail for violations in the past, distant past. One of the weaknesses of housing enforcement has been the discretion of city officials that has allowed Trickle to keep a dilapidated property adjacent to the community garden at Western and 10th Street. I understand he has recently painted a building there, but I believe, as other people in the community do, that this is a fire trap and needs to be demolished. Trickle, Trickle's old man tears at city council should not allow this plight to continue. Recently, there have been complaints that another building that Trickle owns on 11th Street is poorly maintained, unoccupied, and leaking gas. Similarly, on South 6th Street, immediately crushed from the community garden, Steven Inlow owns a building which neighbors report has been unoccupied and boarded up for 18 years. Now, I've only observed five of those years, so that testimony is by other people in the community. It too gets its occasional repainting, but remains a blight on that community, and lots of neighbors talk about this when they're around the community garden. And Inlow has been fine, but I believe personally that he prefers to pay fines periodically to repairing or demolishing the shack on 6th Street. In both cases, the owners landlords continue to allow buildings to be a stain on the community. The fact that they are next to community gardens is an additional insult because the gardens are an effort to make the community stronger, to have productive land and beauty in the neighborhood. Many gardeners and neighbors who see this comment on the problem and wish they were gone. Most landlords take responsibility for their properties in Newark and Licking County, but too much discretion has been given these two landlords, no matter what excuses they give. In the process of fighting for safe housing and against likely properties, the Citizens Committee for Housing Rights has often called for stiffer penalties against landlords who refuse to fix their properties. This has been and will continue to be one of the committee's consistent goals, though through the efforts to have rental registration and licensing, a strong property maintenance committee, and property maintenance complaints. The response of the city, in my view, and other people's view, has been too weak. Many of us go to eviction court every two weeks to learn what is going on, to give tenants information about their rights and the law. Every two weeks between 30 and 40 families, that's every two weeks, somewhere around 1,200 families during the past year, face evictions, and they do not have the benefit of legal counsel or basic information on their rights. This is a weakness of the eviction court and the surroundings of the eviction court, is that there's information for landlords about how to pursue getting the tenants out of buildings and how to pursue legal action, but there's almost nothing for tenants. And tenants often are not represented by legal counsel because they can't afford it, and landlords almost always are represented by, by legal counsel. Most often, people who go to eviction court are evicted. And they call it, what do they call it? Property restoration, er, rid of property restoration.
Restitution.
Oh, rid of restitution, that's right, I'm sorry. Rid of restitution, restoring the property to the owner. It's a very nice name for a situation that tenants are put in, and I should say that the majority of the tenants that I've seen and other people I've seen are working people. They're not people who are just lying around. They're people who are working at jobs that pay too little. There may be jobs, but the jobs pay too little and they can't afford, eventually get caught up in an economic situation they have trouble dealing with. They face consequences, which means their homes are taken. Why don't we deal with slum landlords as harshly? When they refuse to maintain their property, and I say refuse, I'm not just saying they get violations against them, but they consistently refuse, and I would say 18 years is a consistent refusal. I don't know how you do that, but I would certainly judge that. They should be put in jail or have their property taken from them. Very last comment is that there are a number of places, including Columbus, and Columbus is not Newark, and I know there's often an argument presented, well, Newark is unique, but there are many towns that take more serious approach to landlords who refuse to fix their property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone want to administration this evening? Mr. Spurges. Sensing you want to come up here, because you can't move it around.
Mr. President, I'll be brief. I just want to thank our friends who own pets for coming to this ball tonight, hear their concerns. I do care how they feel, they deserve process, but I think it's important when we're accusing an employee of misdeeds, they deserve process. So I'd like to enter to the record, www.AWARKPD.com, citizen complaint process, spelled out very well. For our friends who have internet access, I've also got 10 copies here that I'll leave on the bench tonight. Thank you.
I'll be brief as well, it's been a long night. I do want to thank Nancy for concern on fair housing. She and I have fairly frequent conversations via email about this. Like I tell you, it's been a challenging two years for the Eager family. Don Eager and his wife Linda administered for a housing program, they've done it for many, many years. Don's done it for 30 years. This has been, his life has been his career. I would have to double-check on the number of trainings Nancy and myself to see how many he's conducted this year, but as far as the twice-a-month clinics, I know Mr. Eager was very consistent coming through of the month of August this year. After the month of August, his wife lost her mother, who lived in Arizona. She had a very long illness, severe illness. She passed away in September. That was followed by Linda Eager, and again, she's half the Eager team that administers our program, who brought it in the following month. So they spent a lot of time in Arizona tending to family needs. When this came about, I had some conversation with Mr. Eager, because I knew there was going to be, really his lack of ability to be here locally and to administer these twice monthly clinics, and the fact that some of the trainings I know were suffering. What I have done is I negotiated a one-third reduction in our monthly fee to him, he has agreed to, for this last several months of the year, when all this tragedy struck the family. So that is what we have done, he has agreed to it, and so we did reduce his monthly fee to my one-third. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rodd. I'll be loud, Dr. Mr. Saxon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mr. Saxon, Mayor Hall.
I'll pass.
Mr. Bob.
I'll pass, thank you.
Mr. Cost.
I'll pass.
Mrs. Floyd.
I just want to say, damn, Newark looks wonderful, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Guthrie. Thanks, Mr. President, I'm not going to pass. I didn't say it, she said it. I, a couple things. First, I want to thank Nancy for the point you made regarding annexation. I think it sort of points to the fact that, when I say we, I include myself, that maybe we are not doing the homework we need to do on these kinds of issues, and with, with the financial situation that's approaching in 2016, if there's ever a time when we need to do homework, it's over this next year. And so, and I think those are really good points. The annexation, we have to take care of it. We don't have the resources, if the annexation doesn't generate the resources, I think it's more, it's more than about drilling, so I think that's a very good point that was made. You know, speaking to doing our homework, I think the, this premium holiday issue, I think that council should consider either voluntarily or pass a legislation to include a council member or two on the insurance review committee, so that, you know, we are directly plugged in. We're using this revenue to balance our budget, we ought to really have a good grasp of what's going on with the insurance premiums a whole bit. So, so I think that we should consider that. The only other thing I wanted to say is, this last week, obviously, our community loses people every week that are of great value to our community. Two folks who I happen to think a great deal of, one was Barb Bowlin, whose funeral was Saturday at Christian Methodist Church. Barb was one of these people who, everything she did was about someone else. I mean, they're just, in my lifetime, I have run into many people that are so committed to everyone else but themselves, as Barb Bowlin was. I mean, she, I actually believe that she was instrumental in starting the first food bank in Whitney County, but I never crossed paths with her, she wasn't talking about the issue that impacted people other than her own family. And so she will really be missed, it was a tragic loss to, of course, to the Christian Methodist Church and the food pantry there, and to all of her family and friends. And then the second individual, Virginia Bader, dear friend of mine for 40 years, Jenny was an employee of the veteran services office here in Lincoln County for many years, she served on the city board of zoning and appeals, just an absolute wonderful, wonderful person, and very committed to our community, and Virginia was buried today, her funeral was at St. Francis', and both of these lovely ladies will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Hall.
Yes, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday and be safe, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson.
I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to, I normally don't point fingers, well, yeah, I do. Mr. Ellington graciously called the safety committee meeting, and we normally don't have meetings on that day, because there's never a finance meeting, because you can't do anything financial, so you can thank Mr. Ellington for meetings that night in between holidays. So, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Just want to caution, we are now at a point where we have changed from having an unappropriated balance to utilizing our budget stabilization as an unappropriated balance. We need to make sure that we do not do that going into the future. It occurred this year, I hope that it doesn't occur in 2015. We have other things, our debt services, although we are relieving some debt coming up in 2015, I know the situation where we are as far as vehicles for the city, we have to be cautious, because that's usually some additional debt. Make sure that you're well aware of the formula and how that is figured out and calculated as far as what capital improvements, when we do have debt services, because the more debt that we have, the less money goes into capital improvements, because it comes off the top. And, you know, because the other thing that you want to be aware of is because this year, there was a renegotiation of a debt, and what we did is we renegotiated the debt, yes, over old as a savings, however, that savings is going to be seen in current years, in future years, those payments are going to just increase exponentially. So we're paying less now for later payments, we're going to be paying more, and that does not bode well when we're trying to budget on an annual basis. Steady, even payments are usually better when you're trying to budget, especially in a situation with, that local municipalities are in. I guess I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. I am going to say, very Merry Christmas. I kind of got a chuckle today, because I received a Christmas card, and the Christmas card, the printed portion of it, right on the front said Merry Christmas, and on the inside, I opened it up, and written in handwriting was Happy Holidays. So I thought to myself, that person just offended both groups. So with that, I do want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Ratt.
I offended both.
You got it.
Rodd.
I know, you got the joke.
Mr. Ratt, I believe this one's not.
Just want to reassure. Thank you.
I can go on. Go on, it's okay.
We know. As far as the dog issue goes, there's a lot of people that know that that's one of the issues that I have strong feelings on. I do not initiate, Dan, I have talked to videos, people are all very anxious to see what our first committee meeting that I have been attending on the final day of the month of December will be like. At least it's an issue that I have deep feelings about, that's a good thing. Something else I was going to say, too. I forget what it was now, so I guess I'll just have to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Ratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will call the safety committee meeting, that'll best.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is. You're absolutely right, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, I just, I mean, we've had a lot of issues tonight, and I just want to reiterate the comments that, you know, it is, agree or disagree, it is the civic engagement, and that's why we're here, is the position that we're in, and, you know, we're here to listen and to be respectful of all opinions, and, you know, we heard that tonight, going from dog issues to marijuana, to financial issues, to, to fair housing, and other things, we had a whole banner tonight, so I do want to just say that, to be respectful of that. I want to point out someone who comes on any given Monday and records these proceedings and puts them up on YouTube, and Edward, I want to publicly thank you for doing that this year. You're not paid, you're not elected, or anything else, but you come here every other Monday and record the proceedings of this council and put them up on YouTube for all the citizens on it. So I want to say thank you for the work that you did this year, and, you know, that's very I do want to say that the youth council will be meeting on Thursday, and I do want to thank council members Cost and Roletta for attending the South North Christmas party last week, so thank you very much for coming to that, and I guess, with that, I'll pass.
Ms. Blake.
Thank you, my thanks too, actually, I think you come out every Monday. I think you're getting convinced now, too, so thank you. I'd like to, since I've offended everyone up here apparently, for Mr. Marmy, I will say a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays then, too. Just a little bookkeeping, there'll be no meeting next Monday, 22nd we discussed, but there will be a committee meeting the 29th, if needed, but apparently it's needed now, so we'll scratch that out. City Hall will be closed the 24th and 25th for Christmas. I appreciate your coming, thank you for coming this year and for putting up with us. This is your city council, so we appreciate your coming, giving your opinion, and thank you so much for, hopefully you can come next year, and we'll continue. Thank you, and Mr. Bob's adjourned.
My pleasure. Mr. Bob, second one, Cost.
I'll be first, too.
Mr. adjourned.